Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the May 9 Spokane City Council Legislative Session. I'm Lori Kinnear, City Council President Pro Tem, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, do you want to do roll call, please?
Council President Pro Tem Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Council President Beggs is absent.
Thank you. And we have two proclamations tonight. One is mental health awareness. That's Councilmember Stratton, and then I will be doing the proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. So, go ahead.
So, is there anybody here from the mayor's mental health task force? If you want to come stand up here, I'll read it. I'll bring you the proclamation, and then you guys can share a few comments.
Good evening.
Thank you. Whereas, mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illnesses are prevalent in our city, state, and nation. And since 1949, the month of May has been observed in our country as Mental Health Month. And whereas, one in five people may suffer from some form of mental illness, and through education about good mental health resources in our community, we can encourage our citizens to seek help for mental health issues. And whereas, even before the pandemic, millions of people were experiencing stress, anxiety, and depression, and the pandemic has only exacerbated these conditions. And now, more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles, because that stigma often prevents individuals from seeking help. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Spokane, and recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses.
Well, thank you, Council. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the proclamation. It's a timely and important proclamation. It's an acknowledgement that your leaders take the issue of mental health seriously. This issue of mental health affects us all. It affects those that are struggling with it and suffering from it. It affects our brothers and sisters with disabilities, our LGBTQIA+ brothers and sisters, Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asian Pacific Island brothers and sisters. This proclamation is an acknowledgement that there is a commitment by our mayor and our city to tackle this issue. This proclamation is also an affirmation that we see you, we hear you, and we, including the mayor's mental health task force, are there to support you. You don't have to struggle or suffer in silence. Let's work to end the stigma. Thank you.
So, good evening. Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor Woodward. And it's my privilege to be a member of this task force, because we truly believe and do know that mental health is the challenge for not only now, but the future. And in particular, it is of concern when we think about young adults and children, who have been disproportionately impacted, particularly throughout the pandemic. So, I think this commitment from our great city is very, very important, because we do have the opportunity to actually have an impact in the lives of the many that are currently suffering from mental health or behavioral disorders. So, with that, I want to say thank you, and we will do our best to take this forward and really act upon it. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you both. And I saw Meghan and Logan. You want to come forward, accept this? Whereas, in 1949, a congressional charter signed by President Truman established the National Trust for Historic Preservation, launching the use of historic preservation as an effective tool for community revitalization, economic development, and enhancing livability. And whereas, the Spokane Historic Preservation Office was created in 1981, and since has received national and statewide recognition for its innovative and productive approach to historic preservation, while also recognizing the contributions that many dedicated individuals have made in preserving Spokane's heritage. And whereas, in the past five years, 77 historic preservation rehabilitation projects were completed, resulting in over $132 million invested in Spokane's historic properties. Now, therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Historic Preservation Month in Spokane, and encourage citizens to join the Spokane City/County Historic Preservation Office and the Spokane City/County Historic Landmarks Commission by taking part in celebratory activities, including taking part in free walking tours of downtown Spokane with historic preservation staff members, which is you. Please say a few words.
I'm Meghan Duval, Historic Preservation Officer. With me, I have Logan Camperreali, who's the Historic Preservation Specialist. And then I wanted to introduce Sylvia Tarman and Daniel Zapataki, who are both Landmarks Commissioners. And Sylvia, I wanted to say a few words.
First of all, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for issuing this proclamation. It's very important and near and dear to our hearts. Spokane has a deep history, especially in its built architecture. So, that's something that we really, really enjoy taking part in and helping revitalize. Like she mentioned, there are a number of walking tours going to be happening in the month of May. The first one is tomorrow. They're going to do a walking tour of the Spokane East End. That one has already filled up, so unfortunately, that one's kind of out. But they're also going to be doing a bike tour of the Corbin Park neighborhood on Sunday, May 22 at 2:00 p.m. And then there's going to be one more event, the Historic Preservation Happy Hour, starting at Brick West Brewing on the 26th at 5:30. So, there's still a little bit of room in that one. So, if anybody wants to join, please do so. Being a part of the Landmarks Commission has been a lot of fun. It's very interesting, and it's really interesting to see how it helps Spokane move forward. Thank you.
One other thing that I wanted to mention is, we also are doing a city and county employee walking tour on the 25th. That one filled up really, really fast, and there's way too many people on it already. And we have a waiting list of about 20 more people that are staff people. But I wanted to extend to council and staff, if you guys want me to do a special tour for your group, I'm happy to do that, if somebody wants to reach out. And we can find a lunchtime or something to schedule, an hour tour. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Lori, are you going to take a picture?
Picture?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we are privileged to have East Central Community, sorry, Neighborhood Council, Randy McGlynn, and you're going to give a presentation. Welcome, Randy. And do you need help with the video, or?
Nope, I should be able to get it started here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Councilmembers, it's a privilege to be here in front of you once again to give you a brief on the East Central Neighborhood Council. See if I can do this and talk on the microphone at the same time.
So, Randy, you can use the other microphone.
Oh, can I? Oh, excellent. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, just a quick overview. I will definitely try to be brief, since I have limited time for this presentation tonight. But I'll be going over current projects within our neighborhood, some of the challenges that we are facing as a neighborhood, and also future vision for the Neighborhood Council and our community. Our current projects, just to touch on the few of our key projects that are currently in the works, we're working on trying to get a new roof and HVAC refit for the community center, as well as a new sign that the Neighborhood Council passed a few years ago. We're hoping that George will be able to help us get those projects moving forward. We're very eager to see those improvements to our community center. We're also very pleased to announce that we're starting to get the Fifth Avenue Revitalization Project off the ground. Thanks to Councilwoman Wilkerson for keeping that project alive for us. We're very eager to see some revitalization and some economic development along our Fifth Avenue corridor, with the anticipation of a connection to the Children of the Sun Trail, which should come right through our business area and connect to the Ben Burr Trail. So, really happy to see that project moving forward, and I definitely look forward to working with Councilwoman Wilkerson on seeing that project through. Our major piece of what's happening in our neighborhood is the transportation projects. So, as many of you are probably painfully aware, Freathor Corridor is currently under construction, but it's a very much needed change. So, what they're doing is changing out the asphalt, which creates these ruts really easy, especially with the freight trucks that drive through that corridor. And we're replacing it with concrete, which is much more resilient and will be a longer-lasting surface for that very busy corridor. The North Spokane Corridor, or the North-South Freeway, as a lot of folks call it, we're actively engaged with the Washington Department of Transportation over that corridor, making sure that the neighborhood's concerns and needs are being met. We're very pleased with how WashDOT has been working with us, and we're looking forward to future charrettes and other engagements from WashDOT over the next several months. The other project that we're really excited for and hope that our state government will see this through is a potential land bridge over I-90. The land bridge, from my understanding, is going to happen roughly the location of the Liberty Park Library area. And so, that will help connect our northern end of our neighborhood with the southern end. As many folks are aware, there's not a lot of safe passages over I-90. The few ways you can get across are along very, very busy arterials. And the present bridges are definitely in need of being replaced with something up-to-date. So, we're really looking forward to that project coming to fruition as well. Some of the challenges that our neighborhood is presently facing is, council has been discussing now for several weeks, is the homeless camp within our neighborhood, which is now spanning roughly a city block. And quite honestly, I've never seen a homeless situation like this in my entire life. In fact, I would say that it's probably the worst we've seen since the Great Depression. And many of our neighbors are very concerned about the welfare and the well-being of those people. And we really hope that council and the city administration can come up with a plan and a solution rapidly to help alleviate this issue. And I know that council's been working with the city administration to come up with that solution. We certainly look forward to seeing that come to fruition. And we also recognize that while most of the people there are just trying to get through a really bad situation, we have, unfortunately, a few bad actors that really cause a negative stigma for a lot of the folks that are there. We've seen a sharp uptick in property crimes in our neighborhood since this camp has grown, and it just appears to be continuing to progress. And so, we're hoping that we can see some solutions come through to help mitigate that. One of the concerns that we have is our present precinct for this neighborhood isn't in adequate location. They're literally in a temporary facility, and I say temporary in quotes, because they've been there for over seven years. And according to some contacts with the Spokane Community Policing Organization, that may actually be well over 10 years. That's not very temporary in the neighborhood's eyes. And we really would like to see our precinct be relocated along with the Community Policing Organization, in an area that's accessible to the community, so that folks can engage with them, and they can also easily access the neighborhood and people around the community. So, the other thing that we're hoping that we can see as an ask of the city is perhaps trying to increase some patrols in some of our hotspots. I'm sure the police department already has processes in place for those. But I think that for our neighbors, and especially our business owners, seeing that heightened police presence will make a significant difference in terms of those types of property crimes that we are seeing in our neighborhood. A majority of the complaints that I've received from neighbors, as well as seeing on the neighborhood websites, is concerns over porch thefts and car prowling. So, a lot of these things can be deterred just simply by having that heightened police presence, in our opinion. Our other challenge is with the North Spokane Corridor and I-90 access. We are working with WashDOT on this, but there is a serious concern with our neighborhood losing the amount of access to the I-90 with the reduction in the number of ramps, as presently designed in the current plan for the North Spokane Corridor project. And the reason for that, as according to Washington Department of Transportation, is that they are required to meet certain federal guidelines to make sure that the traffic flow does not get worse through this project. And so, they're trying to make sure that their computer models on what this project is going to do to that traffic, and of course, the increase in traffic over the course of several years, is not going to be worse, but actually improve that flow. As a result, WashDOT presently doesn't see any other way around it, but reducing the number of ramps to the neighborhood on I-90. And as you may be aware, most of the South Hill accesses I-90 through our neighborhood. And so, we feel that this is going to create some serious problems for our neighborhoods. It could have some positive benefits as well. It could force traffic in other areas, which could help promote business opportunities within our neighborhood. But the biggest concern that we have is for those drivers out there that are in a hurry, that are trying to get to work, are going to be driving through our neighborhoods to try to find ways to cut around the traffic. And that, as we know, equates to accidents, and especially accidents with pedestrians and bicycles. So, we really would like to see ways that we can help prevent that from happening. We feel that having our ramps preserved with this project is going to help prevent those kinds of problems. But we're continuing to work with WashDOT for that, and we're continuing to seek support from city government, as well as the county and the state for this project. Our future vision for the neighborhood. So, recently, I launched a diversity committee for our Neighborhood Council. I believe that's the first ever in the history of our neighborhood. Considering the background of our neighborhood, I feel that this is exceptionally important. And it's my goal to see that our Neighborhood Council is reflecting of its community in the membership of our Neighborhood Council. And the only way I can do that is to outreach to the various different ethnic communities in our neighborhood, and seek input on how we can make our Neighborhood Council more inviting, more accessible to the diversity that lives within our neighborhood. So, and focusing on that community engagement, I am working on developing effective communication methods with the city and with the community assembly, because when we use our voice as a Neighborhood Council, it helps to improve that feeling that we have a stake in our community, that we have some leverage to being able to talk to city about our needs and our concerns, and actually get some feedback on that. And so, I've been formalizing some of our communications. As you realize, the previous meeting, I had a resolution that our neighborhood signed. And so, that's improving the feeling from our neighbors that we're being heard, and that our voices being exercised. And so, I intend to have a communication plan for our neighborhood to make sure that, going forward, our neighborhood concerns are being adequately heard by community assembly, as well as the city council. With that, this is my last term as chair of the Neighborhood Council. I've been on the Neighborhood Council as chair for the last four years, since 2017. And it's time for me to help bring some new leaders into our community, and I'll move on to some new endeavors. But one of the things that I intend to do to make sure that we have a sustainable Neighborhood Council is mentoring those future leaders and developing a knowledge base, a book of information on how things can be done, processes of communication, and engaging within our committees and boards within the city. This information is very important. And what I see happen a lot is that information, that tribal knowledge, if you will, gets lost when we have transitions. And sometimes, we have people who get burned out. And so, making sure that we prevent those kinds of things from happening and ensuring that we have that knowledge transfer will help make our Neighborhood Council stronger. And at that point, I conclude this presentation. Any questions?
Questions for Randy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Randy. And really, just a comment to acknowledge your leadership. East Central has had some challenging conversations about what's going on in our neighborhood. And you have shepherded those conversations masterfully, because they were so divisive. I was concerned for our Neighborhood Council. But you captured East Central. So, we've got the money for the roof for East Central, so we're, you know, that train has left the station. And also, the land bridge, we're excited, because this is the first time East Central's kind of been at the forefront of opportunities, instead of at the back end. And a lot of that's attributed to your leadership and what you're trying to do there. So, I just wanted to thank you, as you get ready to transition off and find some other worthy person, just as committed as you are to the East Central neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I would just piggyback on what Councilwoman Wilkerson just said. I mean, I think you've done a really good job leading the neighborhood, and have certainly, it's been a pleasure to work with you in that role. And I was just going to add, I think if you're successful in some of these future endeavors that the council is trying to undertake, and particularly, the thoughtful way I know you'll go about it, it may be something that us as a council or a city may look to replicate on a larger scale. So, we'll be looking to see kind of how you're able to put that together. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to help any way I can. Thank you.
And I'll just add my two cents. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the good job you've done, and representing your community. So, it's very much appreciated.
Just a minute. He's got a few more months.
I know.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Okay, he's got a few more months. Thank you, Randy.
But we may not see him at the podium.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the Northeast, we don't have enough community engagement. And so, having leaders who are engaged in city council meetings and making sure that their neighborhood is represented is really important. And so, for that reason, I'll be sad to see you go, but I'll be really excited to see who comes after you and how they can continue to represent that area.
Certainly. And I won't be disappearing. Despite the fact that I won't be chair, because I work in the neighborhood, I will continue to go to the Neighborhood Council meetings. And I will be happy to consult and provide that guidance, especially for our new leaders that come in. And I intend to share my wisdom and knowledge from my experiences with District One leadership, and actually, with any Neighborhood Council that wishes to seek that information. So, I hope we do create a great template that we can provide for our future leaders in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we have four appointments. Bicycle Advisory Board. Now, we've interviewed them all, so we're just going to take a voice vote, yea or nay. So, I would like to ask you then for approval of these four. And actually, I think I need a motion.
Would you like me to read them first?
Sure.
Appointment of, excuse me, appointment of Erin McCarr, Christina Ramirez, Lauren Pangborn, and Michelle Sidliss to serve a three-year term on the Bicycle Advisory Board from May 9, 2022, to May 8, 2025.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays. Okay. So, congratulations to those four. Thank you for your service. And Ms. Fister, we're going to go into the consent agenda. So, if you would read that, and then we have--
Council President Pro Tem.
I'm sorry?
Can we take number 12 separately?
Number 12 separately. And we're going to then, after you read, we'll have, no testimony, really? No testimony. Okay. So, after that, then we'll vote, and then we'll take number 12.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase of 69 sheets of SA 387 grade 22 class 2, 3/16 inches and 48 inches by 96 inches, steel from Kruger Sheet Metals Spokane to complete a comprehensive replacement of the boiler skin at the waste energy facility, $69,986.57, including tax and shipping. Number two, five-year value blanket order with Cereal U.S. Industries Incorporated, doing business at Cereal U.S. Lock Baltimore, Maryland, for the purchase of lock bars for solid waste dumpsters. Estimated five-year expenditure, $72,000, including tax. Number three, purchase of three Johnny-Jaw systems from SWS Equipment LLC, Spokane Valley, Washington, which allows front-load trucks to service rear-load dumpsters, $59,850 plus tax. Number four, five-year value blanket orders for purchasing traffic signed blanks for the street department with A, Intermountain Sign and Safety, Spokane as primary resource, and B, Stripe Rights, Spokane as backup resource. Not to exceed $100,000, annual price allocation is being shared between the two vendors. Number five, contract amendment extension with Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated, Reno, Nevada, to apply a microseal street surface treatment on Ash Street and Maple Street from May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023, $122,699.35. Number six, contract with Consor North America Incorporated, also known as Murray Smith Spokane, to provide water modeling and analysis and support for the draft water system plan required by the Washington State Department of Health, from June 1, 2022 through March 31, 2024, $20,000. Number seven, contract with Mirmur Water Deer Park, Washington, for commercial water efficiency strategies in accordance with the Water Conservation Master Plan, from May 2, 2022 through May 1, 2025, with option for one, two-year renewal. Estimated annual amount not to exceed $75,000. Number eight, authorization to increase the administrative reserve on the contract with Max J. Cooney Company Spokane for the Post Street Pedestrian and Utility Bridge Replacement Project, increase of $3,650,000 for a total administrative reserve of $5,501,955.70, or 30% of the contract price. Number nine, report to the mayor of pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through April 29, 2022. Total $8,176,090.91, with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants, excluding Parks and Library, total $7,688,485.62. Nine B, pay-reclaims of previously approved obligations through April 30, 2022, $7,695,576.97. Number 10, city council meeting minutes for April 25 and May 5, 2022. Number 11, pipe pre-order with Core &amp; Main, Spokane Valley, Washington, in support of the TJ Menox Street and Utilities Project. An administrative reserve of 10% will be set aside, $413,055.63. Item number-- Item number 12, we've considered separately.
We're, we're gonna vote for that separately.
Yeah. Item number 13, acceptance of eviction rent assistance program 2.0 funds from the Washington State Department of Commerce and permission to subgrant award to qualified providers to be selected through an RFP process, $5,879,189. Number 14, subgrant amendment to add SOS ACI funds to the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project for the Volunteers of America InReach Program, retroactive to January 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022, $91,517. Number 15, subgrant amendment to add young adult housing program funds to the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project for the Volunteers of America Bridge Housing Program, retroactive to January 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022, $69,134. Number 16, Ridpath Club Apartments, resubordination request, the bank loan for the Ridpath Club Apartments will be refinanced with the new loan. Bellwether Enterprise Real Estate Capital LLC and its underwriter are seeking mortgage insurance pursuant to Section 223F of the National Housing Act for the refinance of the Ridpath Club Apartments. Other lenders, including the City of Spokane, are currently subordinate to the current loan. Subordinate lenders have been asked to subordinate their interest in, to the new loan.
Thank you. And we have no testimony. Any comments by council? Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right. And then number 12, please.
Number 12, purchase from Bud Clary Ford Longview, Washington, of an electric 2022 Ford Lightning for the Fleet Services Department to replace a loaner pool vehicle that has reached the end of its economic life, $55,717.60, including tax.
And again, we have no testimony. Comments by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Great. And then Terry, going on to our legislative agenda, we have special budget ordinances.
Okay. Ordinance C 36207, amending ordinance number C 36161, passed by the city council, December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency appropriating funds in Human Services Grants Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $5,879,189. A of the increased revenue, $5,879,189, is from the Washington State Department of Commerce Eviction Rent Assistance Program, EWRAP 2.0, to continue to prevent evictions by paying rental arrears, current due rent, future rent, utilities, and home energy costs, and other housing costs for eligible households due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Number two, increased appropriation by $5,879,189. A of the increased appropriation, $5,585,230, is provided solely for sub-receipients awarded through an RFP process to deliver rent assistance funds to the community. B of the increased appropriation, $293,959, is provided solely for the city's administration of the rent assistance program. This action arises from the need to prevent evictions by paying past due and future rent and past due utilities while targeting limited resources to those with the greatest needs and distributing funds equitably.
Thank you. We don't have anyone signed up to speak. Does anybody from council have a comment?
Just excited we got these additional dollars because the rental assistance portal has been closed since late February, early March. So we're, there was a significant number of folks who had applied, but the money ran out. So this will allow us to fund those and others that are applying currently. And this was funding we did not have. So thank you, Department of Commerce, for giving us this funding.
Anyone else? Okay, prepare to vote. Good job. All right. Thank you. And Terry, moving on to no emergency ordinances, but we have resolution 0042.
Resolution 2022-42, addressing increasing overtime costs within, within the Spokane Fire Department, deferred from May 2, 2022 agenda.
Okay. And we have two people signed up. David Heiser and Andrea, can't read the last name. Want to come forward? Just a review for everyone, three minutes. Jacoby, right here is the timekeeper. And please direct your comments to me. Welcome.
Thank you. As stated, my name is David Heiser, was born and raised here in Spokane. I did 29 years with the Spokane Fire Department. I've been assigned to many stations, promoted to battalion chief in January 2016. I was the interim operations chief for about nine months, including during the onset of the COVID restrictions here in Washington state. My life has been dedicated to serving the wonderful people of Spokane and the surrounding areas. I have missed countless holidays and family events in order to ensure the citizens were well-served. I was called into work halfway through my kids' opening Christmas presents due to a fire. My family's been disappointed by my absence many times, but always understand the absence was not without reason. When the governor's mandate came out, I believed that Spokane would do the right thing. I submitted my exemption request. I was surprised when I received, received an email stating that no accommodations would be made and that my only choice was to get vaccinated or my time serving as a member of the Spokane Fire Department was over. It was not a choice. I could not believe the city I love so much was willing to take someone's rights and personal choices and freedoms away. I could not tell my children to believe in God, but sacrifice your beliefs for your own convenience. I showed up to work on October 14th to start a 48-hour shift, which would be the last time I'd be honored and allowed to serve this community that I love. During that shift, I received a phone call from Chief Schaefer telling me how hard this was on him, not asking how I was doing, but how difficult it was for him. The city has stated they were required to terminate the firefighters by the mandate. Even the governor states that it was up to the individual departments to decide what accommodations to offer, separating himself from any possible liability. The city states that accommodation testing would cost too much money. My absence alone has cost the department over $160,000 in the first six months due to training requirements for my replacement and vacancies created by promotions. The city was the only department in Spokane County to let any firefighters go. Everyone else found reasonable financial and financially feasible ways to keep the training, trained and dedicated employees doing what they were trained and committed to doing. The department has spent an incredible amount of overtime backfilling for the terminated firefighters. The city is also spending a small fortune hiring attorneys to fight a lawsuit brought by the members who had their rights violated. The morale of the department is at what can only be described as an all-time low, which only leads to more absences and more overtime. At what point does the city decide that the way these individuals and the situation was handled was wrong? The mayor and the city council need to fix a wrong. Note, I did not say the fire chief, since he had input on the subject, but by the charter and civil service rules, he does not have the power to let these individuals go. Stop the overtime, stop paying attorney's fees to fight a fight in which the city was wrong. Do the right thing, hire the firefighters back.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
My name's Andrea. I came in tonight, I wasn't prepared to speak, came off the farm, but it was pretty important. I have worked with the Spokane Fire Department and with the city for over 32 years. As a fireman, paramedic, hazmat specialist, technician, peer support team, dispatcher, you name it, I've done it. I absolutely love my job, loved my job. I'm so heartbroken. I get emotional, I apologize, but I provided for my family as a single parent. I have met so many incredible people in this community. I love my job. I lost my job due to the pandemic. I have a brain aneurysm, have a heart condition. It was not feasible for me to take the vaccine. I lost my career. I need to be around for my girls. We let go some amazing, fine men, amazing firefighters. We lost so much experience. It is so sad. These are good people. It's too late for me. I'm retired and I'm blessed, but we have some amazing folks that we could help end this deficit of the overtime shifts. And every department around us, every fire department around us made exceptions, but the biggest, the Spokane Fire Department, we're supposed to be the leader. We let our guys down. We let our community down. We have folks from AMR, District 9, the Valley, Eights, with unvaccinated firefighters. Guess where they come? Into the city of Spokane. We just got terminated for that very reason. But there are so many folks that are not vaccinated. As we know, the pandemic has played different roles. The vaccine does not help. The fire department in itself, with all the vaccinated firefighters, all got COVID. Weird. I have personally never taken COVID leave. I was in the streets, doing full arrests on the streets and balconies in Level B hazmat suits. I have not taken any leave. I love my job, but we can make a difference. We could hire some of these fine folks back and get rid of this overtime deficit. It's just killing us. The morale on my, my job, my career, was my job, is so sad. It is broken. That fire department is broken. It's broken from leadership. I have seen so many horrific things happen and it breaks my heart. But time and time and time and time, I've come to work. I love it. I love coming to work. I had the best crew ever. We serve the citizens. It's like a box of chocolates. You never know what you got when you went to work. But now I find myself, you talk about mental health and depression, I hate to say it, but I thought I'm in that category. I'm so sad because I lost my career to this.
Andrea, thank you. Your time's up.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming down.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Righto. So, comments from council? Go ahead.
So first, thank you very much for those obviously very heartfelt comments. My heart breaks for you guys as well. And I, my heart breaks for the city because we've lost some, as you put, incredible firefighters. Time-critical, highly technical, labor-intensive. That's our fire department. That's, those are our firefighters. Those are, that, that's the job that they have to do every day. Time-critical, highly technical, labor-intensive. Well, we took away a good number of those employees that make up that intense aspect of the labor. And those are folks that watch their brothers and sisters' backs and they're no longer there. That's fewer employees, fewer firefighters to respond. That means more have to work longer hours. They've already been burned out. They were burned out a year and a half ago and we're just causing them to get even more burned out. How long till there's an incident because of that burnout? It's really frustrating to see $7 million in projected overtime costs. $5 million last year. Have we changed a thing? Not one. Not one thing have we changed since last year. We're just cruising in the same direction. But we have an opportunity right now to change course and do something a little bit different. Of the 25, 26 individual firefighters who were eventually let go, approximately half could return, others could move into different positions and return to those previous roles, serving our community and making up the part of that 38 staff member shortfall that we're currently dealing with. We can do that. The administration can do that. They can make that choice. They can, they can start to curb those costs. And that's why I brought this resolution forward. Time-critical, highly technical, labor-intensive. Imagine you're in a room blacked out with smoke, you hear a baby crying, you hear people screaming, you can't see anything, you're trying to touch the wall to find your way through. You get into a tight spot, you panic a little bit because you're not sure you can get out, you don't know where the fire is. I mean, this, this is something that they have to deal with on a daily basis. Imagine you're inside a building and there's a fire erupting and you're standing over that fire, trying to put it out with the hose. This is something they have to do often on a daily basis. Imagine you're responding to a car wreck and there's a person trapped and it's, it's a puzzle of, of metal and different things that are bended around that person and you're trying to get them out alive. And you've got to use the 50-pound jaws of life, holding it over your head, trying to cut some little piece of the car to get it out of the way. Highly technical, labor-intensive, time-critical. We need those people out there. We need them serving our community. You know, I had an opportunity on Friday to go do some of those things that I just mentioned and experience it for myself. And I'll tell you, it changed my perspective radically. And frankly, it made me even angrier that we let those individuals go. What a professional group of firefighters that we have and have had, and we deserve them back. We deserve to have them serving this community. The skills that they have, the abilities they have, the things that they are able to do to keep our community safe is just, it's incredible. And getting to see that firsthand, standing over a fire in, in the, in the gear and putting it out, you know, trying to hold those very heavy tools that they have to use that are cumbersome and difficult, and doing all this in a much more casual way because it's a training exercise, not real life, but experiencing for myself what it is that they have to go through every single day. And we fired 25 of those individuals. And now we're paying the price because we don't have enough firefighters. We didn't run any academies for the last two years, so we're very depleted. And who knows how long it'll take to get all of our academies done, everybody fully staffed? How much in overtime are we going to be spending in '23, '24, '25? Because we simply refuse to address the issues that we can address right now. So I brought this resolution forward because I think it's really important that we get a handle on our costs, that we address the individuals, that we, that we made the bad decision to let go, bring them back, give them a chance to serve our community again, and, and help keep our community safe. It's really simple. And I think we have an opportunity to do the right thing tonight. And so that's why I brought this forward and I would certainly appreciate the consideration and I would certainly appreciate the support from fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Binkle.
Yeah. Ever since the decision was made to let, to let go the, the firefighters that we lost, you know, we've been working with them, trying to find a way to get their job back. And some would say they weren't fired, they were given the option of getting vaccinated, retiring, or going on leave until such time as which they did decide to get vaccinated or the governor lifted his mandates. And while they may not have been technically fired, the option they were presented with was get vaccinated or lose your paycheck. Realistically, that's the position they were put in. And I don't think that's very fair. I don't think it's very good. I don't think it's very moral for us to have looked these public servants in the eye and given them that, that decision. I don't think that was doing right by them. And as, as we've heard tonight, the morale in the department is low. In many first responder departments, we know that morale is low. And it's because the job is incredibly difficult. The decisions that you face are very difficult. It's already not an easy job to do. And when the job is already difficult and then we, we make it harder on them, that's, that's frustrating, that's demoralizing. And that's the situation we find ourselves in. Here's just some, some numbers of increased overtime costs since 2019 for quarter one. In 2019, our overtime costs in quarter one were $446,489. In 2020, with the start of the pandemic, it was $798,858. In 2021, and keep in mind, we didn't run any fire academies in 2020 or 2021 due to COVID. In 2021, our overtime costs were $1.26 million. And in 2022, this year in quarter one, we are over $2 million in overtime. In three years, we've seen it quadruple. And it's directly related to the fact that we have let so many highly trained and qualified folks go despite for years, serving this city at the cost of many family events, many personal wants they've sacrificed for this community. And, you know, it breaks my heart to see people who've been so committed and so dedicated to their community, keeping me and my family safe, that when the time came for us to look them in the face and keep them and their family safe, that we turned our backs on them. And I'm really sorry for that. I really am. I have no doubt in my mind that people in the administration in the city labored over this, labored over this decision. I know that they did not take this lightly and I don't think, into this day, I still don't know, you know, if they would say that, you know, they feel good about the decision. But as we also heard, it's not just a thing about cost. I mean, there's experience there. Mr. Heiser- Mr. Heiser, 29 years in the fire department. He was a, he was a chief, he was a battalion chief for the city of Spokane. That's experience that is hard to quantify. That's, that's a number that's hard to quantify. But that's something that we lost. There are tons of other young families that were depending on this, people who were in this position, serving. Some have transitioned out, some have been fired, or not fired, but hired to other places. But we do have an opportunity to do the right thing. And while I may have disagreed with the decision that was made last year when we let them go, it's never too late to do the right thing. And I would say right now, the right thing that we can do is bring them back. And I would encourage the city and the administration to do just that, find a way to bring them back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question? So on the summary of the, of the resolution, it says, "This resolution encourages the city administration and Fire Chief Brian Schaefer to take immediate steps to reduce the increasing financial burden on the city and its taxpayers resulting from significant fire overtime costs by immediately implementing any necessary mitigations or cost-saving measures that will not result in less effective service or increased response times to this Spokane citizen." So we're putting everybody through this tonight. Do we have any kind of a commitment? Or do we know where Chief Schaefer and the administration are? So we could go through this, pass it, and what if they say no?
I would say that's not stopped us before from passing what we think is the right thing to do.
Right.
If we think it's right.
But we haven't gotten any...
No.
From them.
No commitments.
It is a resolution, so it's non-binding.
I know that, but I just, this is a tough one for everybody.
Absolutely.
And to put everybody through this and then have, if, if it's a no, then we're right back where we started from. And frankly, I'm disappointed that we don't, I don't see the fire chief here tonight unless I... That's unfortunate.
He's not here.
He's not here. So, yeah, that was my question.
Okay. Did you?
I was just gonna say heartfelt stories. And I met some of them early on back in October when this all mandate came down from the state. Now, I know the administration has done everything that they could. We kicked this back to City Legal on several occasions to get them to weigh in where we stand as a city, our commitment and our liability also going forward with this. I speak also as an employer with assisted living facility, first responders, frontline people, caregivers. You all know the shortage we had with caregivers and COVID and overtime. I will say, fire overtime started before COVID. COVID exacerbated absolutely, and we had some funding for that. But I don't want us to sit here and think that COVID was the cost of our overtime. It was already ongoing. So this is a resolution. The administration has told us they have done all they can. This will not go any further. Legal has said they are down to 13 firefighters who chose not to take advantage of any of the options that were presented. Were they the best options? I don't know. I'm not legal. But that's what legal said. The options were presented, and now it's 13 firefighters who made those personal choices, for whatever reason, not to comply. Or their jobs will be there if things should change down the road. So I hear you, but just for me, saying this is not going to make any difference to the administration. You know, it's just like throwing mud at the wall and see if it'll stick. And we know it's not going to stick because we've been doing it since the pandemic hit. So for that reason, I will not be supporting it. However, I will support an amendment to it, so.
Well, I, can I go?
Yes.
All right. So I just want to correct a couple statements that Councilmember Cathcart made that aren't completely true. He said, "Nothing has been done to address fire overtime," and that's not true. We've passed a resolution and funding to do a study on fire overtime. That is being done. We're waiting for that to come back. So something is being done. There are two academies and one more in the works. So there has been action that's been taken done to address it. No doubt, everyone is concerned about the costs and the, the personal impact. COVID impacted not just the fire department, but departments and industries across the city, across the county, and across the country. I'm a public employee that was subject to a vaccine mandate too, and it impacted our school. Morale is down at schools everywhere. Morale is down. COVID is hard. Like, there's no doubt about that. Looking at this resolution, I don't think it does anything except for make a point and gesture to the public that frankly doesn't really move forward on anything. And so for that reason, I can't support it. I also want to point out, by information that we received about the number of people who did not get the vaccine, the vast majority of the firefighters who asked for exemption got a vaccine eventually. So this is not going to bring back a lot of people. Looking at, we had four early retirees and/or resigned, two that took a voluntary leave and came back. So that's six people. And then 12 people were moved around within the fire department. They got an accommodation. Four more rejected an accommodation. So that's a total of 10 people when I count out those who took an early retirement or resigned. It's not this big number. This is a few people. This is not going to solve our overtime problem. We're working on it. A big issue is just COVID in general was the big issue. We had fire overtime problems before. We didn't have either. So for that, I'd like to make a motion on the, can I do that now on the ordinance? To defer it?
Mr. McClatchy? He's saying yes.
Oh, yeah. So I'd like to defer to, or move to defer this indefinitely because there's nothing that this resolution would do to do it until we get any information that would change.
And I will second that.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Go ahead and then...
Yeah, I just think it's shameful that we're afraid to take a vote. I think it's shameful. It's absolutely shameful. You shouldn't be afraid to take a vote. If you want to vote no, vote no. But don't be afraid to take a vote. I'll leave it at that.
Go ahead. First, first, Mr. Bingel, then...
Yeah. And, and frankly, I mean, we do many resolutions that we, as a body, think aren't going to move the administration at all, but it's a point that we want to make. And so to say that it's not going to do anything except to make a point, to me, is a, I mean, no disrespect, but I think it's a disingenuous argument because we do it frankly all the time. We do it with homelessness. We send letters to the mayor to say, "You're killing homeless people. Find something out." We, we say things to make a point all the time. I think it's such a disingenuous argument to say it's not going to do anything that we're addressing the COVID overtime. Look, if, if you think it's only 10 people, look the 10 people in the face and tell them that they're not important enough for us to say we think that we should bring them back.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
I was going to agree. I was going to second because if we defer it, this can come back at any time. If we vote it down now, right now, it's like DOA. So if something should change in the months from the state, and we have new mandates or new directions, this can come back at a moment's notice without going through the process. So we can vote no. But I'm, again, as I told Councilmember Cathcart last time, I'm trying to keep it in play because we don't know what's going to happen in 30 days. The numbers are changing. I wish Dr. Frank Velazquez was still in our audience, who spoke on mental health from the health district. He was in this space. And the numbers, things are in flux. So we can just vote no, or we could keep it in play. Something might change, and that is my hope, but it's up to the decision of each council member.
So I'm going to weigh in on this. And I've been bouncing back and forth about how I want to vote on this. And I did remember something between you and I. And we were told about the overtime. It's always been a problem, but we were told about the gross overtime issue. Was it last year? It was two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. We brought it before the administration, and we got nothing. Nobody did anything. Nobody commented. It was a, "Don't worry your little heads about it." And we knew right then we were in trouble. It got worse. It got worse. It got worse. And nothing was done. So here we are. And, you know, I thought this was going to be something that is just a feel-good ordinance. But then when I started thinking about it, I thought... Councilmember Stratton and I went to the mat to notify the administration that this was an issue and put our reputations on the line and were ignored. And so that makes me angry, quite frankly, because we had good information and we were ignored. So I, I am not going to support, I think we do need to vote on this. I'm not going to support the deferral. And I do think we need to, to vote on this. So, Mr. McClatchy, if it's a split vote, how does that go?
Then status quo prevails and no deferral.
Okay. All right. Let's prepare to vote on the...
Well, the motion's on the floor. Is for...
To defer indefinitely. That's the motion.
Indefinitely, yeah. I mean, I just wondered, like, voting on it is making a statement. That's literally what we're doing, is making a political statement right now then. So, I mean, like, we've all gone to fight for firefighters to bring them back. We've, I've called the governor's office and asked for them to change it and bring them back. So right now, this just doesn't feel like more than anything than a political statement. And I'm wondering why we need to do that instead of working with people to make it happen.
I think we can, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, let me just respond really quick. So the wording of the resolution says, "Is asking the administration to identify a path forward to bring back the firefighters." A path forward. So if, if we don't want to identify any path, then you vote against it.
And I would add, it is a resolution. I do think it shows support. And as Mr. Cathcart said, it does identify a path. I'm really tired of the overtime, really tired of no solutions. We have a overtime study in motion right now, but that's going to take months to finish. And meanwhile, nothing's being done. We continue to accumulate. I guess I want to make a statement. I'm really tired of what we've been doing. I just want to make a statement that you need to listen to us because you and I went to them and said enough, and we were ignored. And I, I guess I'm tired. I want to make a statement. And that's it.
And I would just personally say that this is heartbreaking. My brother was a fireman. I've always supported the fire department. But I think that there is, and I'll say it publicly, I think we need to look at leadership. I think it was, it was pointed out that I don't feel, it's my personal opinion, that we did not have strong leadership leading the way on this in the fire department. But I also have to say on just a personal end, because this is emotional for everybody, but it's also emotional on the side of the person that I was during COVID and worrying every single day taking care of my mom and wondering, as many times as we had to call for service, praying that whoever came in her home to work with her or to take her to the hospital, because everybody's, you know, you bend down and you're so close and you're taking blood pressures and all of that, that they didn't have COVID. I prayed that they were vaccinated. And so I'm just, I want to share that point of view as well because that was a real fear for me and my family up until the day she passed because we relied on those 911 calls and we relied on people coming to our house. I don't know what we would have done if she contracted COVID. That would have been absolutely devastating. So there's another side, and I, I feel terrible about this. This isn't a position that I want to be put in at all, but this isn't going to solve the problem. And we have begged them to look at the issue and to put together a plan. And we don't have it. And there are good employees, former employees that are stuck in the middle. And I don't have an answer, except this is just a terrible thing to have to deal with.
Okay. So we have a deferral before us. So let's vote on that, and then we can...
This is voting on deferral?
On deferral.
On deferral.
You don't want to defer it?
Nope. Is it?
Oh, wait.
Got to do it again.
Karen?
Reset.
I broke it. I'm sorry.
Okay. One moment, Tito. Prepare to vote.
No deferral.
No deferral. Okay. Now, clear that. Let's prepare to vote. If anybody has anything else to say? Okay.
Well, I just want to point out, this is not a vote against firefighters and bringing them back.
Right.
This is a vote, we have tried to do everything, and we've talked to City Legal, we've said everything. They have pursued every path forward and continue to. So my vote no is not against firefighters. It is a vote against this resolution and the actions that I think this is taking that is not actually productive.
Okay. Prepare to vote.
Oh, there.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't vote quick enough.
Okay. You're all going to timeout after this, right? So we're starting over? Yes. Prepare to vote. So it's, it's split.
Resolution is not adopted.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your assistance in things. Next up is 0044. Go ahead, Terry.
Resolution 2022-44, supporting the continued project planning for downtown zip line.
We have two people signed up, Kim Schmidt and Andrew Rawls. Kim, are you here? Come on down.
Hello, I'm Kim Schmidt. I just want to say a zip line downtown is the raddest idea I've ever heard in my entire life. I will, I promise to do it at least once a month, but we also need a suicide net under the bridge. Thank you.
That's a good idea. Mr. Rawls.
Well, Council President Protem and members of council, good evening. I'm Andrew Rawls, interim president of the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I wanted to begin by thanking the sponsors of the resolution, councilmembers Zepone, Bingel, and Cathcart for taking this up and for it being placed on the agenda tonight. I believe you've all been thoroughly briefed on the zip line project, but one observation I'd like to add, since it didn't make it into the whereas statements for the resolution, is that if it proceeds forward, we'll not only have the support of a very long list of organizations that have endorsed it, which includes the Peaceville Valley Neighborhood Council, Riverside Neighborhood Council, Visit Spokane, Spokane Park Board, Spokane Youth Baseball, Spokane Indians Baseball Club, Spokane Hotel Motel Association, and Avista, would all be, would also be among the very first projects of the downtown plan update adopted just last year to be, to be acted upon. And for members of council who consult the downtown plan and update, update on a regular basis, you'll find it listed on page 86 with architect renderings and text description of the project. So it's, it's, it's right there. And with that, I'll close by saying that I believe it's a tremendous opportunity for our community. It will make a remarkable way for visitors and members of our community to engage with the Falls. Thank you, council, for taking this up on your agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Comments from council? Go ahead.
Yeah, just really excited at the possibilities of what could be with a zip line. I think there's been a lot of different ideas over the years and just really grateful to see this in, coming into, hopefully into fruition. And also whoever put this where they did on the agenda, it's just nice to have a chance to exhale after our last debate. So, anyway, just happy to support, glad to bring this forward, and really look forward to seeing what, what the possibilities are.
Okay. Who else?
Yes, I want to thank Councilmen Zepone and Cathcart for co-sponsoring this because as Ms. Schmidt so eloquently said, I think it's going to be rad, and I cannot wait for it. So, yes.
And I just want to say I'm really glad to be co-sponsoring with these two guys, who we can disagree and still work together and agree on other things. So very glad that we could be doing this together. And since we're like the three millennial guys, I think it was very fitting that we got to co-sponsor this, too.
I wasn't going to speak to you said millennial. So I've been in support of this because my grandchildren ask me all the time, "When is the zip line coming downtown?" So for younger than millennials, I've always been promoting for our youth, that 14 to 20-year-old, there is a gap in opportunities for entertainment and enjoyment downtown. And really, that's where the money's at. For all those grandparents out there, like myself, who will go in their pocket, drop some bills and send those young people out downtown, that's economic development to me. So, I am in support of the zip line. I will not be riding it personally, but for those who want to, I'll be cheering you on from the sidelines.
I think you're riding it first.
Did you have something else to say?
I have nothing else to say. I think it's fun and fine and
All right. You know, I was one of the first people that was all in for a zip line and, with Rick Romero. And we were going to go across the river and Avista said, I'm sorry, you can't do that. And I, I lost my enthusiasm right there. So it's not going to go across the river. So I, I support it in theory, just not there. So I'm going to be the one Debbie Downer on this panel tonight. And I apologize ahead of time. And no, I'm not going to be riding it, but I will cheer others on.
Can I just add one thing? So my, my hope is that this really works exceedingly well, and then we can figure out some way to get one over the river, because long-term, that's what I want.
Yes, okay, thank you. Prepare to vote.
Don't worry.
I know. I know. It's so disappointing. Okay, thank you. And next up is ordinance 36202. And Eldon, are you here?
He's here.
Hi, did you want, does anyone have a question for Eldon or?
And I'll read it quick first.
Okay, sure.
Ordinance C 36202, amending ordinance C 27577, that vacated Dalton Avenue from Ash Place to Ash Street.
We don't have anyone signed up, so any questions from council? Eldon, I think you're off the hook tonight. Oh, we should have told him that earlier. I know, but I can't wait for him. Where is he?
Out there talking.
Okay. Councilmember Bingle, paging. Councilmember Bingle. Somebody go get him. Can't leave. We're not done. Okay, all right, you're going to get fined. You're tardy. I got something stuck in my throat. Do you have any questions for Eldon on this vacation? Okay. Kind of wish I was on one right now, but all right, so no comments from council. Eldon, you're off the hook. Thank you. Prepare to vote. Great. Next up, Terry is 36203. We have a number of people signed up. You want to go ahead and read it?
Ordinance C 36203, relating to special events, amending chapter 10.39 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Spokane Municipal Code, sections 4.04.020, 10.39.010, .020, .030, .040, .050, .055, .070, .090, and 17G.050, .070.
Okay. Okay, and we did have, did you want to read the change that we made?
Sure. The amendment is to add a section A that reads, nonprofit park events or street parades sponsored by a neighborhood council and which take place entirely outside of the downtown core shall be capped at $400, including all administrative costs. And then a section B, on or before June 4, 2023, staff may recommend changes to this fee cap to council. And then within the schedule in the, in the ordinance for Hilliard High Jinks Parade, in the fourth column, there is a $400 added in.
Thank you. All right, we have some people signed up. First up is Mark Starr. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to present and your consideration on this proposed ordinance. Bloomsday, as you probably well know, has been in existence around Spokane for a number of years now. This was our 46th running, and it is considered across the country as one of the premier road race events. People that visit here absolutely love the city. We bring a lot of people in from out of town. There was an economic impact study done back in 2017 that I believe that you've been working with. That shows Bloomsday in excess of $12 million brought into the city over the Bloomsday weekend. We love our relationship with fire, police, and the city. With, without that relationship, there's no way that we could put on the quality of event that we do. However, that comes at a cost. Now, while we bring in over $12 million, we currently receive bills from the city in excess of $50,000 to put this event on. As you know, we keep the event as competitively and as inexpensively priced as we possibly can. As a 501(c)(3), a complete nonprofit run by thousands of volunteers, our budgets are tight. And this is a severe impact on us. We would like to do what other cities have done and bring this to a zero cost in recognition of the value that we bring the community in, in terms of dollars. Looking close nor, to the east over to Court Lane, they put on an event over there called Ironman. The city council and Chamber of Commerce in Court Lane recognize the economic impact of Ironman at close to $7 million. They recognize it in a way that we don't here. They pay Ironman $125,000 and some other considerations just to bring the event to Court Lane. What we're asking for is to meet somewhere in the middle and recognize what it is that our event brings the city. And a great way to do that would be to reduce our bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. We have Al Odenthal. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, I'm another Bloomsday guy. I've been around for, well, I had dark hair when I started volunteering with them. So, part of the difficulty that we're looking at in, in this is, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. We had discussions with city administration. We had a discussion with a council member. We had a discussion with city staff. And all of that was explained in terms of, we're looking at this new ordinance, and this is what we're trying to accomplish, and, and this may be difficult. But not once did they say, this zero-sum balance is just not doable. This has been focused of, we're recovering cost from you, and we're going to recover cost no matter what you say and no matter what impact that has on your organization. So we bring about $300,000 in tax dollars out of the $12 million economic impact to the city. I suggest to you, when we're bringing $300,000 into your budget, we're covering our cost. You're, you're recovering that money without sending us a bill later. This is an, an important process for us. I, I can't tell you how wonderful the staff is to work with year after year after year. The, the people that we have contact with, just, they'll do anything for us, at least within, within reason. But part of our issue becomes one of, you know, you want to bill me $500 just to apply for this event? Forty-six years, it's been free just to apply. We have a million-dollar budget just to put on our event at Bloomsday, and that impact is about $25,000 to the city's coffers. We think that maybe you can dedicate a couple of coordinators to help us plan our event from police, fire, and staff for 25 grand. It's like, just be fair here. $500 out of the chute. There are events here that can't do that. You're going to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. And I have to tell you that, that our dollars, we think we're recovering your cost for you. I just don't think anybody's looking at those figures. Thank you for your patience with me and your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up, oh boy. Kent? Kent's?
Keats.
Keats? Do I have that wrong? Keats?
Keats had to leave.
McLaughlin?
Keats had to leave.
He had to leave? Okay. Then Catherine Howell?
Hi, my name is Catherine Howell. I am the current president of the Spokane Rotoract Club, and we put on the Junior Lilac Parade. This ordinance came as a blindside to our organization. We had no idea until last week that it was happening. So, it's kind of a shame on the city. We have existed in Spokane, the Junior Lilac Parade has existed in Spokane. We've narrowed it down between 1930 and 1960 is when it started. As of what we know, it is the oldest parade dedicated to middle schoolers in the entire world, let alone the United States. And there are only two in our entire area that we know of. The other one is the Junior Rose Bowl, excuse me. Yeah, Junior Rose Parade in Portland, and they do not charge a fee. We are the only parade dedicated to middle schoolers that charges a fee, and we have to, because we have a lot of outside costs. But we are competitive, so that does add an extra flair to us that other parades don't do. Specifically, when it comes to middle schoolers. And this ordinance, if it were to pass, would end the Junior Lilac Parade in Spokane. We don't have the manpower or the volunteer hours to put on our parade ourselves this year. We had to ask an outside organization to help us. And we almost canceled. Somebody else came to us and said, hey, how can we help you? It is the first time in 30 years that an outside organization has been used by the Spokane Rotoract to help with the parade. So we've been affected, like a lot of people, just by lack of volunteers. But the young adults are really affected the most, and we are a young adult organization. And so if you ask us to go out and seek outside sponsors, we can choose to find sponsors for the parade or we can make the parade happen. That's it. So it would probably end the Junior Lilac Parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Alan Hart? Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, I'm Alan Hart. I'm a president of the Lilac Festival, so it might surprise you or shock you that I'm opposed to the measure tonight. I'm also a retired Air Force Colonel. I retired out of Fairchild in 2018, out of command at the base there. We stayed here in part because of the cities, the city has the reputation and the, really the feel of being the biggest small town in America. And a lot of that comes from a lot of these great events, like the Junior Lilac Festival that was just testified, and Bloomsday, which I first ran back in 1993. Great events that bring a whole lot, a lot, a lot to the, the intangibles to the city, but also a lot of the foot traffic. So, we've been advertising for years. We bring thousands and thousands of people down to the parade on May 21st this year. And that's very true. And this year, we are trying to come back, start setting up for expansion, and hopefully bring more great events, like the November 20th parade we just did this last year, which brought just thousands and thousands of people, really kicked off that shopping season. Unfortunately, a, a tax, as it grows in there, will make it more and more difficult for us to expand, more and more difficult for us to stay around. And those small town, those smaller festivals out there, those smaller parades and events out there, probably will not be able to survive. After 84 years, we've been, we're very proud to be back here and come back. And I hope that the city council sees fit to, if not just turn this off, but actually work with us over the next year or two to figure out a better way to get a better tax, or a better way to help our police and fund them. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. John Neal? Welcome, John. Three minutes.
Counsel, it's a privilege to be here. My name is John Neal. I'm Bloomsday Race Director. This was my first year in being able to do the, the Bloomsday races as race director, and it was certainly an honor. I stand before the, the council with a tone of, of first congratulating all of us. We were able to, to host a major event downtown, and it was a joy to see more than 20,000 people lining up on Riverside and finishing on the Monroe Street Bridge. It was a wonderful sight, and on behalf of all of our volunteers as well. It was a thrill to be able to put on a road race once again. In doing so, Bloomsday brought our springtime bloom to the city. We packed the streets, excuse me. We brought in people from other areas, from around the region, from around the country, and from around the world. We brought hotel stays. We brought ringing cash registers, and we certainly brought the economic vitality back to the downtown core. The economic impact of Bloomsday continues to grow. In updating our study in, in 2017, and Mark Starr alluded to, $12 million, and we continue to want to grow that. And as we get back to where we were with 40,000 people, with 50,000 people, that economic impact will grow. Bloomsday contributes millions of dollars to the city's economy, will also be in asked to pay the city services bill for an event that yields that very impact. And while we immensely appreciate the city's willingness to discount that bill, we feel that legacy events like Bloomsday that have, has an ability to generate revenue, that, that we should receive an ability to likewise apply for a waiver of those fees. Bloomsday brings millions of dollars to the city. It's likewise considered as, by many, as to be the, the crown jewel event of the city, one of. And allowing events like Bloomsday to bring the world to Spokane, create a formula that allows events to show their economic impact and receive a waiver upon demonstrating economic threshold, we view this as an equitable solution that certainly preserves legacy events like ours, promotes travel to Spokane, and sustains economic growth for the city, and likewise incentivizes events like Bloomsday to grow. It's a privilege to stand before you. It's a privilege to be a part of this amazing city. We celebrated 46 years of the running of Bloomsday, and we look forward to another 46 more. But we also wish to come before this council and say that there are other solutions that we can look at, both to support events like Bloomsday, like events like Hoot Fest, and for other events that, that are in our city's core, that don't have an, an opportunity to raise, raise revenue. So for that, I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Council President Protem, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So have you brought some of these other ideas that you said you have, have you brought any of those to the administration and shared any of those?
You know, I would, it, it's something that, that certainly Mr. Odenthal and Mr. Starr have, have addressed. I, I would be happy to, to work through some of those solutions as well. I think one of the, the fair frameworks and, and a way to equitably look at this for, from the standpoint of Bloomsday, that, that is able to generate revenue is to look at an economic threshold, to say, if you're able to generate a economic impact of dollar X, then that should qualify you for, for a waiver. And certainly when, when we contribute 12 million and when the, the Hoot Fest contribute well more than that, it's then looking at, hey, if there's a $48,000 bill, you know, that Bloomsday's to pay, we've certainly earned ourselves the offset for that based upon the dollars that we're able to bring in. And so I would look at, at a formula like that. I think that, you know, Bloomsday and Hoot Fest and some others, you know, operate from a different and unique perspective, different from, from the Lilac Parade and, and the Junior Lilac Parade, and likewise with the St. Patrick's Day Parade. But I think when you look at those formulas, that we can come up with an equitable solution for that. And Bloomsday, we would be happy to provide that economic impact study, if it's once a year, if it's every other year, to demonstrate that we're able to, to bring this economic impact and therefore deserving of that waiver. So I think that there's ways that we can craft an economic and, and, and good formula solution for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Kim Schmidt, are you still here? Oh, there you are.
Hi, I'm Kim Schmidt. Um, I came, I wanted to speak on this tonight specifically about freedom of speech events. First off, as I was leaving the door to come here tonight, I received two public records requests from Spokane Police Department. They were both for events that happened in April. Starting first, on April 19th, which was a TCAP, on Indiana Avenue, police officers closed down one lane of traffic. There was five officers present that night. Now, when you think about the history of TCAP, and I know that you're all familiar with TCAP, there's most, if you compare from month to month, there's generally considerably more officers there than five. Okay, moving on to April 23rd, there was a rally at the Clock Tower. There was 25 officers on that roster working that event. Okay, that was a freedom of speech event. I get it. It was planned ahead of time. In both instances, with the organizers that were organizing those events, I have in the past documentation that they have communicated and coordinated with the police department. You know, there is pre-planning ahead of time for these events, and I do think that that needs to be taken into consideration. They're working in coordination versus just this pop-up event that happens or something, because those will happen from time to time. because those will happen from time to time. And when you think about 25 officers, and there's been up to, there's been, I wish I would have thought to look at this before I left the house, but I have counted over 50 officers present at some of these free speech rallies. Okay, so I, and I'm an organizer too. I absolutely, if I want to shut down a lane of traffic so that my people who are wanting to protest with me, I would be more than happy to get a permit. I would be more than happy to go through the legal channels that we are technically supposed to go to, to abide by city rules. So I am just putting that out there. It may not make me the most popular person in my community right now, but I think that's the respectable thing to do. If you are willing to put yourself out there, but at the same time, you're requiring assistance to do so, I do think it's only fair that you have some sort of retribution for that. So thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Rolls.
Counsel President Protam, members of council, once again, I'm Andrew Rolls. Thank you for an opportunity to comment on this issue. And this is an incredibly challenging, hard issue for the city administration, very labor-intensive in the planning and in the execution of these events. Police, fire, and lots of other people put enormous amounts of time into this. But the same is true for all of our great event organizers who have, for years, if not many, many decades, invested enormous amounts of time annually into events that have become very much a part of our city's social fabric. Young people who have fond, fond memories of these great events have become older people and think back to those events. And this situation might cause those very same events to have to consider as a part of their due diligence, other options. And that's my concern, that cities, or our great signature events that are very much, or there's so much a part of downtown, might have to look elsewhere, given the economic impact of this. And Councilman Couthcart, you'd asked the question of concepts that might assist with that. And if I understand correctly, one area you might look into is LTAC or lodging tax dollars. If I understand correctly, those funds have not been put to the level of use that they customarily have been over the past couple of years for obvious reasons. So that might be a source to help cushion the impact on this. And it's a significant issue for our organization. You may be well aware that the Business Improvement District Board of Directors has, over the past couple of years, directed DSP staff, and we're, of course, the organization that's privileged to manage the Business Improvement District, to create a grant program. In between allocations last year, and then allocations we anticipate this year, we will have allocated just about $40,000 for events that will be, that have been and will be in Riverfront Park and here in the downtown core. So we definitely see the necessity to promote foster events, and those are focused very much on new events. I think we're in the neighborhood of seven or eight that we were able to grant funds to. But that doesn't, of course, cover these vitally important legacy events, which I hope to be able to have my children look back on those when I'm old. And so please, we do ask that you might reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. And did you want to speak, Mr. Gluck? Come on in.
Thank you, Counsel President Protam. I missed the piece on this ordinance regarding how it impacts the neighborhoods. So I appreciate that that amendment was read. That piqued my interest, is councils where, the neighborhood councils promote a number of neighborhood events. We help to sponsor those events. And that process has changed several times over the course of the last few years. So my first question is, if I understood it correctly, the impact of this ordinance of its past would mean that the neighborhoods would have, or whoever is putting on an event that is sponsored via the neighborhood council will have to come up with $400? Am I understanding that correctly?
Up to.
Up to $400?
That would be the cap.
So then, I'd like to offer a suggestion with council, because we only get so many funds, so much funds with the neighborhood council for community engagement. And quite often, we use community engagement dollars to help with these kinds of events, especially now where we have to, once again, purchase event insurance, which was formerly being sponsored by the Spokane Community Policing Organization. So my ask is, if this does pass tonight, could City Council look into perhaps finding a way to increase the community engagement grant? Because as it stands now, our dollars are going to go not nearly as far with the present economy. And so that's going to be a need regardless, but increasing that community engagement grant might help to allow us to continue to promote those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask for council comments, Carley, you're back there. Do you want to come up? And so we're going to have comments, but Carley may be able to answer some of our questions. And Mr. Bingo, do you want to go first?
I had a question for the Bloomsday folks, if I could.
Okay. Which Bloomsday folk? Did you, new ones?
And yeah, and also, you know, Lilac Festival four. As people are paying to be in your event, and I know that Lilac is different, but for Bloomsday, people paying in your event, would it be outrageous to ask for, you know, a dollar or two from each individual to help offset the city's costs? Because I understand your argument. I think it's a really fair point. Is that something that would be outrageous, to ask people participating to pay another
At present time, we already take a lot of heat anytime we go ahead and increase our entry fee. And so right now, we charge one of the lowest entry fees in the nation for a race of our caliber to promote as much widespread participation through our community. And that's with a focus on families. There are many people who do Bloomsday that otherwise wouldn't do a seven and a half-mile run, but they want to do it to participate as a part of the community. And we routinely hear from those families, from those that are non-runners, that are not competitive, that it makes it very, very difficult to do Bloomsday because the price is, for example, $28, which means that a family of five would have to pay $140 to do Bloomsday. And so we deliberately keep the price as low as possible to ensure that we get as much participation through our community. So in increasing the entry fee, it is something that we hear from our Bloomsday community that then that's effectively preventing them from doing the race. And so we try and keep it as low as possible. So in tacking on a 50 cents or tacking on a dollar, it has widespread ramifications of whether or not we're able to get all of those that want to participate.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Wilkerson.
Well, I was going to speak, especially Andrew has spoken to LTAC funding. So over lodging tax advisory is when people spend a night in a hotel, there's a tax that's taken and set aside to promote events downtown, especially events that bring people into stay-in hotels overnight. The last two years, that fund has not been utilized because there's been no events. So there is currently a significant amount of money in that fund. And we only had three applications for LTAC funding this year. So that is an opportunity that has been totally underutilized going forward, especially, and I know a lot of these are volunteer organizations and the timing and all that, I get that. But there are resources out there. I will also tell you, coming before the community, out of ARPA dollars, there is $400,000 for the next three years for events of citywide significance or cultural events that can be applied for. When that goes out this year, I'm hoping it'll be retroactive to January 2022. So if you already spent your resources, you would have the potential to file an application and recover that investment of your cost. So I look at this, the first year, there's no costs. This year, nobody's getting charged anything. Next year, there is some costs. But in the ordinance, it also says in 2023, it will come back before council to see if there needs to be some adjustments made on the fee schedule that's been presented. So some of those potential suggestions you had about economic impact, I don't know where that's been at. Council doesn't get that deep. It just comes to us as it's presented, so we don't have those conversations. But we're certainly open to hearing them going forward, so.
And Councilmember Wilkerson, did you want to have Carley, because she did talk about some of what you mentioned.
Yes.
And you also talked about outreach. Before we keep going with council, do you want to just brief us on what you did?
Sure. So, great questions. We've, I've worked very closely with a lot of the events, and so I've received the economic impact statements. We reviewed those. I don't want to speak for our CFO, but having Tony Wallace review what actually we get off the sales tax is not as straightforward as it's presented. I'm not going to pretend to understand. That's not my area. So I will just leave it at that, that it has been looked at. I do think there's a lot of room. I know from, Hoop Fest could not be here tonight. The previous Hoop Fest director had let me know that when he had made applications to LTAC, he was often turned down because it was an existing event, and they would ask him to present something new. So that's been a challenge. So, you know, I don't know. That seems like that might have been a barrier in the past that's been an issue there. I do think that there are, again, continued ways for us to look at doing what is an alternative. I know, according to some conversations with Council President, ARPA dollars are on the table to be able to kind of offset these costs. I think, you know, going back historically, some of the challenges that we have found is if this doesn't pass tonight, we're kind of back to where we started, where unfortunately, it's a 60-40 split for Bloomsday. So Bloomsday would go from paying, I think it's $12,000 last year, to probably back up to the 50, 60,000 that Mr. Odenthal pointed out. That's just been what we've done in the past. That's our most recent MOU. That's what we would probably fall back on. At one point in time, we came forward with a MOU with Hoop Fest that was significantly lower than the 60% in recognition of their economic impact, which is over $50 million. Again, nothing to disperse the 12 million that Bloomsday brings in, but Hoop Fest is considerably more. And at that time, City Council did not approve moving forward because it was not consistent and fair with the other events. So these are some of the issues that we kind of keep running up against in our efforts to come up with something that's consistent, transparent. I'm not saying that this is perfect at all. I definitely think there is still room that we can do, but this creates a path forward to start getting on that same page, to continue the conversation while being transparent. As far as the outreach, it breaks my heart to hear that Junior Lilac did not receive the outreach that I did. Unfortunately, it was the same email address that worked this time as I used last year to try to reach out. So, you know, obviously, again, improvements that could be made. But we did. Last year, we sent out some communication, this is what we're thinking about, sat down with all those groups that, you know, agreed to meet with us, got their feedback. I think that's probably one of the most important things that we did was the flat fee approach. I mean, we heard everybody loud and clear that there can be quite a bit of variation. I projected that St. Pat's Parade this year would cost about 22,000. It came in at 25 and change, I mean, closer to 26. If we had done that 25% rate that we were considering in the first place, that would have been, you know, an extra couple hundred thousand dollars that St. Pat's would have had to come up with. And I agree, that's not reasonable for nonprofits that are working on this margin to come up with. So that's why we came up with this flat fee approach, to allow them to budget appropriately for that. The phased-in approach, I think, was another thing that we tried to be in recognition of the past two years. And for some of these parades that have never had to pay anything, to be able to appropriately find a sponsor, increase the rate for an applicant entrant to be in the parade. None of these are easy conversations, but I think these are, all of these things need to work together to, in order to continue having events.
So Councilmember Stratton, then Councilmember Couthcart.
So Carley, it sounds like we've had some really good dynamic discussion going on tonight regarding this. If someone were to make a deferral to push this back a little bit, would that, and I don't know if it's two weeks or three weeks, how badly does that mess you up?
It doesn't, I think the administration's viewpoint at this point is, we're not going to charge any events this year. I mean, just, again, we want to have events coming out of COVID. It's not really fair to anybody to make them pay for that. So I think we have some wiggle room. What I'll be honest on is, I'm not sure what's going to change. We're, in my opinion, some of the conversations I've had is, it's a matter of who else, are we going to charge another tax? You know, is it an increase to the LTAC in order to offset that cost because they haven't given it in the past? Is that a change to the LTAC? It's not about this ordinance itself, it's about that other piece. And that's where I've kind of reached the end of the road with this proposal, is those conversations are something completely separate to this. If we want to continue having those conversations, it's just, we can, it's just going to take longer than two weeks to do.
There's just, what I was thinking about as I was listening to people, maybe there's something that we could talk about, the Bloomsdays and the Hoop Fest that really create the big revenue for the city, that maybe there's a process that we look at them not paying anything, but yet they put money in a special fund that would help these smaller organizations. But I don't know. I mean, I was just being creative in my little brain, but.
And I appreciate the creativity. I mean, this has been, like I said, a very five, six years that we've come back in different iterations of trying to come up with a solution. And again, I know this isn't perfect.
Right.
But that's kind of where we're at now.
So, yeah, I, I'll admit, I'm pretty conflicted here. And if there was a motion to defer, I would certainly do it, just to give us some time to explore some of these other ideas that were presented. I guess where I'm really confused, and maybe the biggest hangup, is we're hearing from the events themselves, saying that this is going to cost them a lot more. But then, Carley, you tell us too, that if we don't pass this, essentially, we could actually charge even more. And so I'm, I'm kind of, I'm not entirely sure of the disconnect. Why do they think they'd be charged more? Why are we saying it'd be less? I'm trying to figure out what's going on.
Right. Speaking on behalf of Bloomsday, if I may, is, in conversation with them, is, again, this idea of, we bring in all this money, that the money that we bring in, that percentage of 12 million should offset our cost altogether. So even though they would pay less, it's more of the, we shouldn't have to pay anything. So I think that's the argument that they're trying to make. What we're presenting actually does benefit Bloomsday from what we've done traditionally in the past. Yes, there would be an increase in the application fee, which we've always charged the $50. We are, it is going to be an increase there. But their cost recovery for the public safety costs would come down, and that would be the same for Hoop Fest, as well as Pick Out in the Park. Again, in kind of recognition of that economic impact, the ones that are impacted the most are the parades, which haven't paid anything. And so, yes, that would be a much more, a heavy economic burden on them because that's not something that they've budgeted for in the past.
And when you say their public safety costs would come down, or, you know, ours, I guess, that we're charging them for. So when you say they'd come down, is that based on the, like, the rates being that in 2022, we're going to charge zero, in 2023, we're going to charge, what, 25% of? Or is that based on what we will eventually be the full charge in 2025?
Based on the full charge. So the full charge for Hoop Fest and Bloomsday and Pick Out is 50% of that five-year average, and specifically throughout the highest years on that. So like, Hoop Fest in 2018 was pretty astronomical charges. And so threw that out in recognition of, you know, I think that's another thing that this administration is cognizant of and working with police, of just how much police is really needed. We do have fire overtime as well with some of the events. Bloomsday is one of them with the PED MED teams. Most of our other ones don't have. It's usually the athletic events that have fire overtime with them. So usually, I'm just referring to police overtime for the traffic control and crowd control. But it would be that 50% when traditionally, we've done 60. So again, that's, I don't know where we go from here, but traditionally, as this administration, we've brought forward the 60-40 split. If this dies, gets deferred indefinitely as it did last time, I would have to believe that most likely, the administration would come forward again with a 60-40 split, which, regardless of where we end up, you know, would be more next year, but certainly more than would be in 2025.
And so under a 60-40 split, just be very clear, so under a 60-40 split, 2025, they would be charged more under a 60-40 split than what's in the ordinance now.
Correct. Correct. I think, and I will add one other thing, just because of a disconnect. With the police contract that settled last year, the last bill that we had for any event was in 2019. The police all got a 20% raise. So we had to factor that increase into what that flat fee was. So I suppose on paper, it would look like it's going to be charged more than it was. But the reality is that 60% of their new overtime rate is going to be considerably more. So that might be, I tried to explain that, but it's possible that that got lost in translation. It's been three years since we've had events.
Other questions for Carly?
So clarity, if we defer tonight to get more information, because this year, there's no charges at all, you don't believe there'd be anything different from the administration for more additional research and input at this time?
At this time, I think, again, where we're at is we need a revenue stream coming in to offset this. I think Mr. Rolls did a pretty good job of making that argument, you know, from that standpoint. And that, you know, frankly, becomes more of a policy issue that rests on city councils and than administration. And so that's where I'm saying, if council wants to defer and work on this, you know, I'm more than happy to be a partner. I know administration would be as well. But from the administration's side of the House, we've kind of reached the end of the road. I don't know where else to go from here, besides some direction from all of you of, you know, we didn't like this part of it, this was still too much. We want to have Bloomsday and Hoop Fest pay less, or we want somebody else to pay more. I mean, that's where we'd have to go. And so by all means, defer if we need more information for you. But I think the offset or the revenue piece needs to be in somebody else's hands, and that's where we're stuck.
Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Bingle.
Yeah, so I would support a deferral as well, mostly because I just don't know where I'm at right now. I'm conflicted. I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying. And I just don't know which way I would go today. If we voted today, I'd probably abstain from the vote because I just, I honestly don't know where I'm at right now, so.
You wouldn't be able to abstain, but that's okay.
What I meant to say was, I don't know how I would vote. I guess I'm just, I'm torn. I'm conflicted because I see both sides, and I don't, I just don't know where I'm at right now.
So, go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to defer this until June 6th, with the understanding that those individuals here tonight that have been so patient in sharing their ideas and sitting here after almost 8 o'clock, make contact. I mean, we've got to find a way for them to directly contact you, either by email or phone, just with what your ideas and what input you have that might change the direction. That doesn't give us a long time, but it would be till June 6th.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Two seconds, all right. Any discussion on this deferral? All right. All those in favor of deferring, prepare to vote. That would be until June 6th.
June 6th.
Looks like we have 6-0. Good work, all right. Carly, thank you.
Carly, thank you.
I know you've worked hard, I really do appreciate it. We all do. And we can talk later. Thank you.
And thank you to the Bloomsday folks who came in, and Lilac and Junior Lilac. Expect a call from our office.
Okay, next up, Ms. Sister, is 36204.
Ordinance C 36204 relating to design guidelines amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17G .040.020 and adopting new design guidelines.
We don't have anyone signed up for this. Did you want to say anything about this? Your sponsor.
No, it's been a great process. Do you want to come up? Dean, you want to come up? If there's anything you want to say? Working with the design guideline team, I just think with all of the future development and housing development that we're going to see popping up in Spokane, that this is, some of these new guidelines are very positive, and I think it's more user-friendly as we go through the guidelines. I'm going to give you a few minutes, if you want, to say something. And don't forget that Skywalks, because those are cool.
That's next.
Well, I look forward to helping. My name is Dean Gunderson, urban designer for the city, senior urban designer for the city. And kudos to all of you, actually, because I've been sitting in the back listening to this. So, I get to go home right after this. So, thank you, everybody. This has been a wonderful project in terms of the amount of outreach that we've held with members of the public, and also specifically reaching out to the design professions, the American Institute of Architects, the American Society of Landscape Architects, the American Planning Association, the Local Home Builders Association, all talking and getting substantive quality feedback to help improve these documents that will give the necessary tools to our design review board and our urban design staff to do the job that we're tasked to do. And this makes it, because I've been in numerous meetings where both appointed and some elected officials and many members of the public say, well, it's just design, and it's just a matter of opinion. You know, what looks good for somebody, it's not everybody's cup of tea. And while that is true of the general public, actually, urban design staff are paid to actually be able to make those difficult judgment calls. And this is one of those, one of those missing sets of tools in our toolkit. Because when we looked at projects in centers and corridors, or when we looked at projects like schools and libraries, we really didn't have the guidelines. We were just kind of winging it. I think we've done a fairly good job. But communities usually face, when there is a challenge to some zoning decision, and it usually comes down to design issues, courts will actually give credence to jurisdictions that have adopted standards and guidelines. So this actually makes our toolkit whole and protects the public and the public's interest. So thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
And I have to add, just as an example, there's a lot of, there is talk of a development up on Garland Avenue, a housing development. And during the last few months, residents during the neighborhood council meetings have had questions, they're worried about building height, all of that. And we're putting together meetings with the developer, but there's just, there's a fear there because they don't know what to expect. And we were able to, at one point, go through, when there were questions about height, open up the draft plan and show people, because there are actual pages on how you can make buildings, you know, how you can hide that height, how you can make them look like they're part of the neighborhood and they're not, they're not, what's the word, so out there.
They're more contextual.
Yes, and it was great to be able to have something to show people that could calm some of that panic, that they knew that, you know, we were looking at design and that that was involved in this process. I mean, it was worth everything just to be able to answer those questions.
Yeah, I think that, just to kind of follow up, when we think of the design standards that are written in code, often the conversations about those standards are, what can we do to really make projects really beautiful with the standards? The standards themselves actually aren't there to make beautiful architecture or beautiful buildings. The way to make beautiful buildings is you empower a really good designer. And the standards are there to be the minimal performance characteristics. It's just like, if you go to the building code, your minimum hallway width is three feet. But who wants to walk in a three-foot-wide hallway? You know, you have options above these. By adopting these particular standards, it allows more quality designers to ask for a design departure from the standards because they have better ideas, they have better alternatives. And now we actually have the tools that allow us to actually evaluate those alternatives.
That's great. Any questions for Mr. Gunderson? Well, he's here. Okay. Prepare to vote.
Are we voting on all three, or just?
Just one, just the one. Unanimous, thank you. Next, Ms. Sister 36205.
Ordinance 36205 relating to standards for Skywalks, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 12.02.0405, .0410, .0424, .052, .0464, .0470, and .0476, repealing Spokane Municipal Code Sections 12.02.0450, .0460, .0462, and .0474, and adding Chapter 17C .255 Spokane Municipal Code.
Okay, so this is your favorite? Skywalks, did you want to?
We just need more Skywalks. And they need to be, you can make them cool and zippy, trust me.
Cool and zippy, great.
Very technical terms, yeah.
Lighting, and you know, yeah, I'm excited.
Any comments from council? I think she said it all, right? All right, prepare to vote. Another 6-0, thank you. And then finally, we have 36206.
Ordinance C 36206 relating to the design review process, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 8.02.0665, 17G .030.020, 17G .060.070, and 17G .060.170.
Okay, again, we don't have any public testimony. Any comments from council? Okay, good, prepare to vote. Good, we did it again, 6-0. And first reading ordinance is 36208.
Ordinance C 36208, changing the zone from Neighborhood Retail 35 NR-35 to Neighborhood Retail 55 NR-55 for property located at 2921 West 8th Avenue, 2918 West 8th Avenue, and 2937 West 7th Avenue in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington. By amending the official zoning map, further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, open forum. We have several people signed up. Mr. Savage, you're up first. We have three minutes for you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Savage. Tonight, I would just like to do a small dedication and memorial to individuals who have inspired me to be involved in my local community as much as they were. Even though they were both on each side of the political spectrum, I honor and kind of am inspired by how they were specifically involved in coming here almost every week, especially in their old age and in sometimes their failing health. So I would just like to take a couple silent moments to honor George McGrath and also Alfredo Giametto. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Kim Schmidt? Welcome again, you have three minutes.
Thank you kindly. I am Kim Schmidt. Whether you realize it or not, Spokane is infamous in both the pro-choice and pro-life communities. Why? Because Spokane is where TCAP started. TCAP stands for the Church at Planned Parenthood. Founded in 2018, TCAP is a regularly, and regular and incredibly disruptive protest that happens at the Planned Parenthood building on Indiana Avenue. Members of TCAP have been documented harassing and terrorizing both patients and staff at the healthcare facility. TCAP has spread its grasp across the United States with at least a dozen active groups. Members of TCAP are directly linked to convicted murderers, convicted clinic bombers, convicted clinic arsonists, Proud Boys, extremist evangelicals, convicted insurrectionists, and many more. If you ever want me to do a PowerPoint, I'd be happy to. In fact, photos recently surfaced of the fourth person to enter the Capitol Building on January 6, 2021. The man broke down barricades, shattered a window in the Senate Wing, and assaulted an officer, all while wearing a black TCAP hoodie. The nation was shook last week by the leaked documents from the Supreme Court. While some states prepare to ban and/or outlaw a safe medical procedure, other states like Washington are preparing for a massive influx of folks who are seeking safe medical procedures. In Spokane, we already see a large amount of folks from other states who are seeking abortions, which is, again, a safe medical procedure. I stand here tonight to implore the council to take a stand, even if it's just a symbolic proclamation that Spokane is and will remain a city that supports bodily autonomy related to reproductive rights. We owe this to our citizens. We owe this to anyone who must come to Spokane to seek a safe medical procedure. We owe this to our communities, to communities like Knoxville, Tennessee, who's also been terrorized by TCAP, whose healthcare facility was attacked twice last year, once by a shotgun blast to the front door, and then destroyed by arson in December 2021. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the attacks on our own clinics, like the 1996 bombing, or the malicious mischief felony charges brought against a man who destroyed 14 windows last August at the Planned Parenthood healthcare facility in the valley. Please take a stand to help make Spokane a safer place for those seeking healthcare. We need this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next, William Hurlings. You have three minutes.
All right. So, as you can see on the TV, that is in Riverfront Park, a few blocks away. I live in Spokane, I live a few blocks from here. Last evening, or last city council, they, somebody got up here and said she watched some people get beat over there by the Ridpath. This guy right here is one of these street kids. They hangs out downtown. He was riding through the park. He basically said that I tried running him and his sister over. So he started threatening to kill me. To make this story short, he ends up going to jail, okay? They weren't, the cops weren't going to do nothing, even though this is all on tape, well, until I said it was recorded. But to make this story short, a city employee, the Parks Department, rangers, their security guards, they're entrusted certain privileges. So they banned me, excluded me, I don't know what they call it, trespassed me, but watch this guy. This is on the first day of the food truck. There is one ranger in the park, all these people walking around. People try to intervene. I could have fought this guy. I'm a veteran, I've been in many fights. I've been, but I chose to stand there, and I called 911. Nobody answered. I called Crime Check, get voicemail. But like I said, this guy ends up attacking another person walking by. The next day, I called Councilman Bingle, arranged to speak with him and Nicolette, his aide. And I sit there and I explained to him what happened. I never expected I was going to get banned from a park in my own city for a whole year. But they're saying that I, because I was mad and I had pepper spray on me, so they used that, they said that I had a weapon that could cause bodily harm, which all women and people carry pepper spray, and that also that I was being disorderly. Like I said, the SPD, actual law enforcement showed up, and I was let go. The guy went to jail. So these are the people that are roaming downtown that get attacked all the time. People are getting shot at Lucky's in the head. Like I said, I've been around the world. I lived in LA for a couple of years, and gang violence is real. This is Spokane. And so I'm on the phone right now. The guy, and they said, well, why didn't you leave? Well, I called 911. Why am I going to leave when I called 911 and this leaves? So I stayed there. And this is when he goes and attacks this guy.
Mr. Hurling, your time's up. Appreciate you coming by, thank you.
So please do something about that.
Okay, Sherry Barnett? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Would you dare pull this down?
Absolutely.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, President Protem and all members of the city council, I will tell you that I really don't like having to do this. I really feel like I must do it. I'm going to remind you of Alexis de Tocqueville. He was from France, and France had their revolution about the same time the United States did. States did. But they were very different. Ours was positive, vibrant. The French Revolution was drenched in blood and was repressive. And he came here to the United States looking for what made America so great. And he said, it wasn't in the beauty of the nation, even in the riches of the resources, not in the industries, not in the farms, but it, the people and the churches. He found the people knew their constitution, they met together, they reasoned together, they loved one another, they loved their country. And when he went to the churches, they were filled with love for God and with mankind. One of the things that I feel is happening here is we have forgotten God, just like Solzhenitsyn said, and we're moving to where there's a great conflict between our people. It's coming to a climax. It's coming to a climax between good and evil. And when I see what happened to the firemen and to so many people I know in the beginning of COVID, the nurses and the doctors had no vaccines. They were working and caring for people, and they were working like 20 hours a day. And many of them got fired because they did not. What's happened that people cannot have any conscience of their own body, and yet, they're taking TCAP to court, they want to make them sound like wicked people? No, I have two children. One is a blond-haired, blue-eyed daughter, she's not part of my body. I didn't have a right to have her excised like I would have a tumor taken out. And I had a hazel-eyed, light-haired, well, brown-haired boy, a different sex, they're not part of my body. And yet, we're able to excise people on these rules. It's just wrong, and I do see that it's coming. And when I go to TCAP, this is not true about TCAP, I go down there, they sing, they pray, they preach, they're not even talking to anyone, and nothing is happening at Planned Parenthood when they are there. So that is an untruth.
Thank you, your time's up, I appreciate you coming down, thank you. Mr. Anwar Peace? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, my name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and a 22-year police accountability expert. Last Wednesday, I went to court over a $30 parking ticket that resulted in me beating that ticket, which was a racial profiling Terry stop with a parking enforcement officer. See, I had just parked at the Bank of America building for my second, second of three in-person meetings with Assistant U.S. Attorney, DOJ Civil Rights Coordinator, in order to have the U.S. Department of Justice to do a patterns of practice investigation on the Spokane Police Department. After utilizing my Seattle parallel parking skills to park, I gathered my things with my engine running, windows and sunroof open, while loudly playing anti-police music. At that point, a parking enforcement officer walked up to my driver's side window ordering me to pay for parking. I told him I would pay after I gathered my things. Then I told him the nature of my meeting with the DOJ. And it was at that point, the parking enforcement officer ordered me to get out of the car, pay for parking, which I retorted that this felt like an illegal Terry stop. And this was the exact kind of Terry stop kind of situation that I was meeting with the DOJ about, because the SPD has been doing this unconstitutional policing like this. And it was at this point that the parking officer wrote this $30 ticket. I was shocked when I went to court to find out from the judge that the picture evidence submitted had no certification from the officer and no notes from the officer as well, which also shocked the judge, who then threw out the ticket because that evidence, the judge said, was hearsay. So at this point, I'm encouraging Spokane citizens that get parking tickets to go to court to fight their tickets because of this sloppy investigative gathering, evidence gathering of the parking enforcement officers. And the city needs to look into this sloppy evidence gathering by parking enforcement officers, which if this is a pattern, then the city has been collecting illegal fees that should be refunded to the citizens immediately. For far too long, parking enforcement and the police department have been allowed to become their own little magical fiefdom, and due to this, no more blank checks for the police department from the city council till true accountability takes place. It's been 685 days since the city council proposed their 24-point Public Safety Reform Agenda resolution, yet to be voted on. So the question remains, when will the city council go forward with any type of police reforms? If not now, when? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we've come to the end of our time, and it was a lively discussion, I appreciate you all, thanks for participating, thank you all. Our next meeting will be May 16 at 3:30 for our briefing, 6 for our legislative session, and we are adjourned.
I'll move my stuff in the back because I can't leave right away.